Give a call to the common council meeting to order up August 15th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Kuzakowski.
Here.
Great, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. Ricky, you feel like doing the honors tonight?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a point on housekeeping then, Mayor Dan is traveling out of town tonight, so as a result, I'm running the meeting and I will retain my right to vote for the resident for the 5th district. It's just a piece of housekeeping. That said, we'll move on to item number 3, approval of minutes of the July 18th, 2023 meeting. Is over and questions, concerns, corrections, additions, deletions, otherwise we'll take a motion.
Lorick moves to approve the minutes of July 18th, 2023.
Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Staines.
Thank you, all right. Moving on, item number 4 then is a council proclamation. Congratulations to Colton B. Cabeli for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Catherine, please read that into the record.
Certainly. Council proclamation number 2305, congratulations to Colton Bryce Cabeli for receiving the Eagle Scout Award, whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout, and whereas such award is an earned award in that the recipient must perform and successfully complete and pass the rigid requirements exacted to achieve an Eagle Scout Award, and whereas less than 4% of all Scouts actually achieve this goal, and whereas at a quarter of honor to be held at Gorney Park on Sunday, August 20th, 2023, at 1 o'clock PM, an Eagle Award will be conferred upon Colton Bryce Cabeli, and whereas his Eagle project, Colton chose to design and construct an observation deck with attached benches at Gorney Park in Caledonia, and whereas with a fundraising goal of $1,000, Colton sought out donations from several organizations around Oak Creek, in addition to family, friends, and the troop, and whereas in addition to funds raised, Colton also received donations of building materials from the village of Caledonia, and whereas Colton coordinated the efforts of approximately 25 volunteers to assist with the planning and construction of the observation deck and benches, putting in a total of over 130 man-hours of work, and whereas the addition of an observation deck with benches located just off the walking path at the Gorney Park Pond will provide park visitors with not only access to the pond, but also an area to stop, rest, and appreciate the peaceful setting, whereas the Oak Creek Common Council wishes to recognize this noteworthy achievement of Colton Cabeli. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations to Eagle Scout Colton Bryce Cabeli for having an Eagle Scout Award conferred upon him by the Boy Scouts of America, be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk be, and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Colton Cabeli, presented and adopted this 15th day of August, 2023.
Great, thank you Catherine. Any comments from the council?
Congratulations.
Family, anyone want to say a word? No pressure, you don't have to. If you're more than willing, have at it.
No, I just wanted to thank the Oak Creek Lions Club for donating a good portion to my cause, and they gave me a check for $500, which covered half of my costs to build the deck and benches, so thank you to them.
On behalf of the council, I just want to congratulate you on your effort, it's great that you continue the legacy of the effort that goes into becoming an Eagle Scout, I know my kids started in Scouts and didn't finish, so I know what an effort it is, so I appreciate that you persevered and did that, and the community's better off for your hard work, so thank you and congratulations again.
Thank you.
I have your award here if you want to take it with you. Okay, we'll need a motion then to approve the proclamation.
Marshall will move to approve proclamation number 23-05, congratulations to Colton B. Cabeli for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Britzel, second.
Right, roll call, please.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Fantastic. Second proclamation then is item number 5, resolution of commendation to Rick Gabriel, retiring public work specialist. Catherine, please read that in.
Resolution number 12426-081523, resolution of commendation to Rick L. Gabriel, whereas Rick Ricky Gabriel began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on February 28th, 2000 as an equipment operator, and whereas Ricky Gabriel's position was reclassified to equipment operator 2 on January 17th, 2016, and public work specialist on June 26th, 2022, and whereas through his years with the city Ricky has known to step in when needed and was always willing to tackle any project given to him, enjoying special projects that took him away from his day-to-day routine, and whereas Ricky has been recognized for his snow plowing dedication and his assistance to Shepherd Hill Softball Field Project, where he managed the dirt trucks, placed and graded over 100 loads of dirts, and worked with the fencing contractor so as not to disrupt their operation, and whereas Ricky became the go-to person for CDL training for new employees, driving with them to assess their abilities to drive a plow truck en route, training several individuals who went on to successfully pass their CDL test and be assigned their own plow routes within the same snow season, and whereas Ricky Gabriel was a very effective employee during his years of service with the city of Oak Creek, answering many calls for service from the community and providing immeasurable service to the residents of Oak Creek, and whereas Ricky is retiring from his position of public work specialist with the city of Oak Creek Department of Public Works effective August 4th, 2023, completing 23 years and 6 months of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek, now therefore be it resolved that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Ricky and his family in his retirement years, be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Rick Gabriel, passed and adopted this 15th day of August, 2023.
Great, thank you Catherine. Comments from the council or Andrew?
Sure. Some fun ones, Rick, one of the things I'll always remember is you could notice you coming down the road from a mile away and always brought a smile to my face, you have a unique look about you up in that cab, so I will miss that seeing you around town, but just really well-deserved retirement, and thank you so much for your service, you were always comfortable speaking your mind to me, so I really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you Andrew. Anybody else? Who's?
I just wanted to say congratulations and enjoy retirement.
Rick, I just want to offer to on behalf of the council and the community, we appreciate your 23 and 1/2 years of service greatly, obviously your dedicated soul, and one thing people may not think about, I personally appreciate the fact that you felt the need and the obligation engaged in this community and in this council and being here on a somewhat frequent basis in our audience, I do appreciate the fact that you took the time to do that, I think that speaks volumes for your character and such, and I wish you a happy and extended retirement, so congratulations again. If you want to grab this over here. Rick, did you want your picture taken?
You want a picture?
Give me your phone, I'll take a picture of you.
And you're still welcome at meetings.
Great, thank you again, we'll need action then on item number 5.
Marshall will move to approve resolution number 12426-081523, a resolution of commendation to Rick L. Gabriel, retiring public work specialist.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call, please.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Great, we'll start then with public hearings, first one is item number 6, conditional use permit, consider request submitted by Christopher Fink for a conditional use permit for general office use on properties at 7101 and 7115 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Catherine, read that in the record.
Certainly. Public hearing number 1 is to consider a request submitted by Christopher Fink for a conditional use permit for general office use on the properties at 7101 and 7115 South Pennsylvania Avenue, applicant is Christopher Fink, property owner is Christopher Fink, there follows the legal description, date of notice is June 28th, 2023.
Thank you. Doug, you got this?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening Doug Seymour, Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek, first of two public hearings this evening is for a rezoning conditional use permit, the properties at 7101 and 7115 South Pennsylvania Avenue, the applicant is requesting recommendation of an approval of a conditional use permit for a general office on the properties at 7101 and 7115 South Pennsylvania Avenue, so general offices are a require a conditional use permit in the B2, which is the, I think it's Community Business Zoning District, sorry, still getting used to the new names, generally we love to see those types of uses, kind of different kind of mixed uses even in our neighborhood commercial nodes, this is one of those requests, per the submitted request and narrative, the request is to utilize the first floor of this building of the, as a existing office for office, restroom, and meeting room for the owner's painting business, the second floor would remain as an apartment for the owner, and just as a side note, site plan, kind of highlighting some of the changes proposed for that property, many of which have been made already, has been submitted and will be considered by the Plan Commission at their next meeting next Tuesday, so after careful consideration of the request, the Plan Commission did recommend approval of the request to conditional use permit, subject to the hedge conditions and restrictions, we'll note that this is a public hearing, if anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for the property at 7101 and 7115 South Pennsylvania Avenue, please approach the podium, give your name and address, proceed to address your questions and or comments to the common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you Doug, we're going to make three calls for public commentary and then close that down and open it up for common council discussion and questions, so with that first call for questions, comments from the audience, second call, and third call. Close the public hearing now and open up the questions, comments from the council or staff. Great.
I'm just curious Doug, I know they've been to planning a couple times.
Yeah.
And we've had very lengthy discussions with them, do you know if, I know there was some issues with the trash enclosure and some landscaping issues that, I believe last time they were planning, they mentioned that it would have been way too expensive to meet code, do you know if there's been discussion?
Yeah, there actually has, and I'm pleased to report that staff and working with the applicant has actually suggested allowing some reductions on that, given what we perceived as probably some unnecessary landscaping that could have been alleviated, so happy to announce, and certainly subject to Plan Commission approval, but I think that we've come to an agreement on a more revised, probably better landscaping plan, and as far as the trash enclosure, he is going, the applicant is going to be taking down the wooden enclosure, and as far as I'm aware at least, we're placing that with one which is conforming to our codes and standards.
Thank you.
I just want to comment that I did have, kind of played phone tag with Mr. Fink's attorney with regards to this item, this was not a smooth road to get to tonight and anything future, there were a lot of bumps in it, but both parties had to spend a lot of time working things out, and looks like most of it got worked out and we're going to take a vote on something tonight, so I'm just glad to see that.
I don't have anything else either, anything else from staff? I know this has been a lengthy discussion of Plan and Commission, so it seems to have a resolution to those concerns? Great, cool. All right then, we'll take action on item number 7.
Kurkowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3079, approving a conditional use permit for general office use on the properties at 7101 and 7115 South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Lorick, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Great. Item number 8 then, public hearing then, to consider request submitted by Matthias Chappa and Nicole Rolson and Bernie and Carol Weedy to rezon, rezone a portion of the property at 9709 South Hall Avenue from RS3 to single-family residential to RS2 single-family residential. Catherine, you want to read that in the record?
Certainly. Public hearing number 2 is to consider a request submitted by Matthias Chappa and Nicole Rolson and Bernie and Carol Whitey to rezone a portion of the property at 9709 South Hall Avenue from RS3, single-family residential to RS2, single-family residential, applicant is Matthias Chappa and Nicole Rolson and Bernie and Carol Whitey, property owner is Matthias Chappa and Nicole Rolson, property location is 9709 South Hall Avenue, legal description there follows, date of notice is July 19th, 2023.
Thanks again Catherine, this request is directly related to a CSM that was approved by the common council back in July, which really adjusted the property lines between the two properties on Hall Avenue and Fox Run, kind of in the Fairfield subdivision, no new lot was created, and it was just a matter of that with the reconfigured property lines, the zoning would have split the properties, which is never the best solution, so the property owners chose to rezone the properties so that the entirety of the property is all one residential zoning, no other changes are being proposed, the Plan Commission did review the request, and they did recommend their approval, again, this also was a public hearing, if there's anyone who has any questions or comments regarding this proposed rezoning, please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address those questions or comments, the common council, this public hearing is now open.
Great, thank you Doug, as before, we'll make three calls for commentary or questions on this item, first call, second call, third call. Great, with that we'll close the public hearing, open it up to comments, questions from the staff or council? Straightforward arrangement? Then I'll take, first we'll move on to item number 9, and I'm sorry, and to consider the ordinance actually for 3080, number 3080, rezoning a portion of the property at 9709 South Hall Avenue, from RS3, single-family to RS2, so we'll take action on item number 9.
Britzel, motion to adopt ordinance number 3080, rezoning portion of the property at 9709 South Hall Avenue, from RS3, single-family residential to RS2, single-family residential.
Marshall will second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Great, moving on then, item number 10 then, is to consider motion to concur with the Celebrations Commission and designate Sunday, October 29th, 2023, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM is the official city of Oak Creek trick or treat. You're always controversial.
So when is the pack game? That's the question.
Oh. Is it a home game or not?
Yes.
29th, October 29th.
There you go.
Trick or treats from 4 to 7.
Kidies are going to be on the road.
Should not affect anything.
4 to 7 works great.
There you go. Any other, any other comments, questions, dissension? Good. If he feels compelled, he can take action on item number 10 then.
Britzel, make a motion to concur with the Celebrations Commission and designate Sunday, October 29th, 2023, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, is the official city of Oak Creek trick or treat.
Lorick, seconds.
Thank you. Roll call on item number 10.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Moving on then, two items from health, item number 11 then, is consider resolution number 12424-081523, approving the memorandum of understanding between the city of Oak Creek Health Department and the Cudahay Health Department for provisions of reproductive health services. Darcy, I assume that's you.
Me, good evening, Darcy DuBois, Health Officer for the city of Oak Creek, I'm bringing an agreement between the city of Oak Creek and city of Cudahay Health Department for the provision of reproductive health services, over the past 10 years, Oak Creek, like many communities in our area and the country, certainly have seen increasing rates of sexually transmitted infections, and we know that in Oak Creek, especially for the un or underinsured population, there's limited access to screening and testing for STIs, as well as access to birth control or other reproductive health services, so under this agreement, the Cudahay Health Department would use space in the Oak Creek Health Department, but their staff would come here and offer these services, they've been offering reproductive health clinic, reproductive health services in Cudahay since 2020, they have a nurse practitioner on staff, as well as trained public health nurses that have expertise in providing these services, so the services would include screening and treatment for sexually transmitted infections, as well as provision of some forms of birth control, they'd also work with the clients who come in to help them establish healthcare, a medical home, so an actual family practice doctor or physician that they could see for their ongoing, any health needs outside of our clinic, previously, the Oak Creek Health Department had been exploring the possibility of offering similar services, but we ran into a couple of barriers, including the fact that without a nurse practitioner or doctor on staff, there's limited services that we can bill insurance for, and the process of billing health insurance for reimbursement for these services is quite cumbersome, and it would be very difficult to recoup the revenue to cover the expenses of the program, so this seemed like a happy medium to bring services to our area, but not incur cost for the city, so there would be no cost to the city for these services, just providing Cudahay with the use of our space. Any questions I can answer?
Do we have the space to give them?
We do, yep, so they would just be using our clinic rooms, so we currently offer clinic in the Health Department Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're tentatively talking about having them here on Wednesdays, twice a month every other week, and those clinic rooms are largely unused when we're not offering clinic.
Actually, what was our practice now, did we refer folks somewhere else, or refer them to Cudahay?
We would, yeah, we would refer them to Cudahay, you know, if they have health insurance, we try to connect them with a provider, but you know, as we know, it can be difficult for people to get to other communities, and we have heard some feedback that it'd be helpful if they could access services here.
Any other questions, comments? Steve?
I had questions earlier, but I had a chance to meet with the, earlier, and it was Monday or something, we chatted.
All right, then we'll take, look for action on item number 11 then.
Marshall will move to approve resolution 12424-081523, approving the memorandum of understanding between the city of Oak Creek Health Department and the Cudahay Health Department for the provision of reproductive health services.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item number 12 then, is the next item for Darcy, then, is to consider a resolution number 12425-081523, approving the memorandum of understanding, business associate agreement and qualified service organization agreement between the city of Oak Creek Health Department and Community Medical Services for peer specialist services for quick response team overdose follow-up visits. There you go.
So, and as many of you know, we've been providing overdose follow-up visits in the city of Oak Creek since 2019, previously it was a public health nurse who worked with someone from police and/or fire to go out to the home of a resident to meet with them and/or their family members following a non-fatal overdose, to offer resources, support, try to help connect them with treatment if that's something they're interested in, those visits were paused during the pandemic and resumed last year when the case manager came on board, so the case manager has been doing those home visits when we receive report of a non-fatal overdose, we would like to work with Community Medical Services because they employ peer specialists, who are individuals who are living in recovery, who have experience with substance misuse, and are able to connect with people who are currently experiencing addiction, and offer support and resources and a connection on a deeper level than those of us who aren't experiencing that can, Community Medical Services has been offering this service with several other health departments in Milwaukee County for a number of years, they're located in South Milwaukee, they're also an organization that offers medication-assisted treatment for individuals with opiate use disorder, so under this agreement, they would bill us for their services, I believe it's $30 an hour, up to a maximum of $3,000 a year, I mean, we do have grant funding that would cover those services that they were offering us. Any questions that I can answer?
I have one quick question. Obviously, this is a great program, I just noticed that you mentioned that this is a counseling or individual visits for non-fatal overdoses, for the individual as well as family and friends, is anything offered for the family of or friends of those that had a fatal overdose?
That's a good question, so if we receive a referral from police or fire when they respond to a fatal overdose, the case manager will follow up with family members or friends of that person to offer resources and help try to connect them with some sort of services that might be beneficial.
Thank you.
Darcy, question, well, our case manager continued with this, or will they hand us off to this group?
The current plan is that they would do a joint home visit initially, and then depending on the interest of the client, the peer specialist could continue meeting with them after that initial visit, or the case manager, depending on what their needs were.
Okay, cool. You have any feel for how many unfortunately we're doing this annually?
I did look, so in 2022, there were 109 reported non-fatal overdoses in Oak Creek, we typically only follow up with individuals who are Oak Creek residents, so not all of those individuals live here in Oak Creek, some of them are, you know, visiting various establishments, so I don't know the exact number of visits that the case manager did in the last year, but we follow up with any that we get the referrals for, and if they live in another community, we do our best to send a referral to that, either health or fire department who does those visits in another community, to try to connect them with services.
Seems like a very impactful program. Anybody else? All right, then I'll ask for action on item number 12.
Lorick moves to adopt resolution number 12425-081523, approving the memorandum of understanding, business associate agreement, and qualified services organization agreement between the city of Oak Creek Health Department and Community Medical Services for peer specialist services on quick response team overdose follow-up visits.
Marshall will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Great, and moving on, we'll have engineering, thank you Darcy. Item number 13 then, is consider resolution 12427-081523, approving the Royal Estates Development Agreement with Oak Creek Residence LLC for the design and construction of public improvements for the development located at 9102 South 27th Street.
Thank you Alderman Gail, Matt Sullivan, city engineer, so before you, we have a resolution for the approval of the development agreement for Royal Estates, this development consists of 10 single-family attached buildings, which will encompass 36 units, the developer, the agreement covers the requirements the developer must follow to gain occupancy and create a functional development, the only, in public improvements within this development are the water main that will be consisted and constructed within a 25-foot easement throughout the property, there'll be some minor improvements along 27th Street, which will follow WISSTOT standards, everything else within the development will be private, includes roads, street lighting, storm sewer, and a private sanitary interceptor, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have. There'll be some minor improvements along 27th Street, which will follow Wistat standards. Everything else within the development will be private, includes roads, street lighting, storm sewer and a private sanitary interceptor. Be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Who's? Long's just been cooking, Matt. It's been up.
This, this project probably has been going on for a year and a half, almost two years since the, and it brought it forward to planning.
But is expected start this year or next year start?
I would imagine that once this is approved, we'll start seeing some grading and minor construction utilities and that.
Any other questions, you guys? I'll take action on item number 13 then.
Mr. Kozakowski makes, Marshall, that common council adopt resolution number 12427-081523, approving the Royal Estates Development Agreement with Oak Creek Residents LLC for designing construction of public improvements for the development located at 9102 South 27th Street.
Marshall, second.
Roll call please.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item number 14, consider resolution number 12428-081523, releasing the developer from the development agreement for the Milo Thomas CSM.
Thank you Alderman Gail, Matt Sullivan. For you as a resolution to release the development agreement. This development was in the northwest corner of East Rossin Avenue and South 27th Street and it was approved in 2005. The history back on this, basically it came forward when there was going to be a proposed development or improvement within that lot, which was a newer car wash in the process of selling the property. During the title search, this became an encumbrance on the property and needed to be resolved. It was brought forward to planning department and then engineering, so we've been working with the owners at this point to come to this agreement on release. All of the infrastructure, which is water main and sidewalk have been improved back in 2005 and completed. We recommend releasing this development agreement, kind of a cleanup.
Thank you Matt. Any comments, questions from the council? Otherwise, I'll ask for action on 14.
Kuzakowski make a motion to adopt resolution number 12428-081523, releasing the developer from the development agreement for the Milo Thomas CSM.
Lorik, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, item 15, consider resolution number 12429-081523, accepting the workmanship of JH Hassinger LLC and authorizing final contract payment under project number 22009.
Alderman Gail, the project for the dorm remodel and fire station three has been completed and accepted. We have no issues as far as the workmanship, building's maintenance and fire chief and assistant fire chief have approved it, reviewed it. We have no reservation out of engineering as far as approval. We recommend doing the final payment and closing out this project. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Anything for council on that? Let me, I'll take action then on item number 15.
Kuzakowski make a motion to adopt resolution number 12429-081523, accepting the workmanship of JH Hassinger LLC and authorizing final contract payment under project number 22009.
Lorik, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Item number 16, license committee, I will gladly turn that over to Alderman Kuzakowski.
Thank you. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the information on tonight's common council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares or concerns? Okay, seeing none. Kuzakowski make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the August 15th, 2023 License Committee Report.
Ritzel, second.
Roll call please.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
All right, moving on, item number 17, vendor summary. We're going to spend some money, I guess. Motion to approve the July 26th, 2023 vendor summary report in the amount of $543,548.19. Take a look in questions, you can be directed to Max or Andrew, whoever, appropriate authority there. Anything? Take action on item number 17.
Kuzakowski make a motion to approve the July 26th, 2023 vendor summary report in the amount of $543,548.19.
Lorik, seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Great, item number 18, to close it out, consider a motion to approve the August 9th,